We have the Putnam County School District for October 5th, 2021 is now in session. We have the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Jane Crawford and our invocation by Dr. Serency.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Bowden.
Our most precious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together. We thank you for this board and we ask that you be with him, help him make wise decisions that will benefit our students, our teachers, and our entire community. Thank you for our many blessings. Thank you for the way you watched over our county and kept us safe during his most difficult time.
Thank you.
Be with us and guide us and lead us in the way you'd have us to go. The assembly break.
Amen.
Okay, this afternoon, we have two presentations. Our first will be Interlochen Junior/Senior High School State Fair Culinary Winner. And I believe Chef Tyson is going to make that presentation.
He makes better food.
Are we? If you'll come to the podium.
Over here. Chef.
Okay, so we have a young man here, Jaden Monroe, who has been going out to the state fair for, I don't want to say how many years because it makes me old. But since he was in elementary school, basically. And I think that every year you have won at least two or three awards, I believe, haven't you?
Wow.
Nine years. It's been that long.
Wow.
Nine years straight, yeah. So, elementary school, middle school, and also in the high school. So, and we're gonna keep doing it, so maybe this year he'll win again.
That's awesome.
So, Jaden.
You need to get in it.
Jade, we're good, just right here.
Board chair, get in there. Holly, you gotta direct him.
How cute.
That is a good picture. Wonderful.
Wonderful. Now, we have a presentation by Ms. Tanya Whitehurst on our Paris to Pros program.
Good afternoon. I am excited to be here today. Two and a half years ago, I came to you and presented a Paris to Pros partnership with the school district and St. Leo University, where we were focusing on our paraprofessionals who had already achieved an AA degree that were wanting to pursue a degree in education and become teachers. So, we started that in the fall of 2019. And we have six of those very first cohort. There was a total of nine in that cohort. We have six of them that are teachers, teaching with our school district. And we just wanted to present to you our very first cohort of Paris to Pros today. So, we're really excited. I'm gonna go ahead and have them come up here because I have one of them who is going to be the spokesperson for them. And then I will introduce each one of them individually. But if they'll go ahead and come on up here and stand, I'm gonna have Heather Pogue. She's gonna say a couple of words. And then I have a statement from their principal to read as I introduce each one of them.
She sure looks like Heather Deloitte.
Yeah, that's me, Heather Deloitte. So, I'm gonna be quick. We came into this very room two and a half years ago, and we were sitting here and they had a presentation. And I don't know, maybe this isn't legal, but whatever. Before I came, before I came to this meeting, I had prayed because I was like, Lord, I have wanted to be a teacher forever. And I had decided to get married and have kids and do all of that stuff first. And I would never give that up because I stayed home with my kids for 12 years, and that was a blessing. But I was ready to do something else. And so, Ashley had hired me as a para over at Mosley. And then the next year, the principal came in and was like, hey, you've got your AA, you can teach pre-K. And I was like, oh, my own classroom, yay. And so, I started teaching pre-K. And then I moved over to Browning Pierce. And one day, I got an email from Tanya and it said, hey, if you've got 60 credit hours or an AA, come to this meeting, you might could be a teacher, Paris to Pros. And I was like, oh, yay. So, we came to this room, and before we got here, I prayed the night before. And I said, God, this has been my dream. And so, see, I wasn't doing this, I'm sorry, y'all.
It's okay.
And I said, this has been my dream. And so, if it's meant to be, I need to be able to support my family somehow still and make it through college and still have my job or something because I've got these four children I gotta help take care of. And so, I came, and one of the first things they said is that we are going to continue to pay for you while you take your, while you do your internship, you're still gonna get your pay. And I was like, check. And then they were like, we found some different things that can help you with some grants and some stuff. And so, it's only gonna cost you like $200, $300, $400 a semester. I was like, check. And Dr. Serency can probably tell you, and Ms. Whitehurst, I stood there and I said, where do I sign the dotted line? And so, while it was a new adventure, and it was a lot of work to have four kids and teach pre-K and be in classrooms every single day and continue to support the kids, it got me exactly where I'm supposed to be today. And so, I am beyond grateful for this opportunity because I now have 140 children on top of my four children at Polacka Junior/Senior High School that I love with all my heart. And even though they make me a little crazy some days, there's not one place else I'd rather be.
Think of the difference you're making in their lives.
This is my family that helped me get through. Because when the nights when I was tired and I had done school all day and I had an assignment due the next day, and I was like, I can't do this. And they're like, oh, yeah, you can. And when one of them called and said, I can't do this. And I'm like, yeah, you can. And so, us, the nine of us, there's a couple that are still finishing a couple of tests, but the nine of us made a family out of this. And so, the district gave me a family, and they gave me a support system so that people who are paraprofessionals and are busting their tails working and still going to school full-time have somebody to lean on and to love each other. And so, I am beyond grateful for this program because now I am able to serve the children in the county where I grew up. And I have people that I'm like, when I need help, I call them and say, hey, what do you guys think I should do for this lesson? And they're there. And so, that's something that can never be taken from me, and I appreciate it more than you'll ever know.
I have a question, Heather. Are you teaching in one of your old classrooms?
You know, it's funny, Ms. Crawford, I'm teaching English Language Arts. She taught me in ninth and 12th grade, just FYI. And so, I am actually not in one of my old classrooms, but it's mine now.
It's familiar territory.
Oh, I know exactly where I'm at, right by the stairwell. So, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Whitehurst, are you gonna, I don't wanna take you here, but are they gonna be able to speak to us and tell us what they're doing?
I'm gonna do that.
You can do it.
If you're okay with that, sir.
They all wanna know what you're doing.
Okay, yes, sir. So, before I introduce them, I just wanna kinda let you know where we're at in the program. We have two, we have a total right now of 11 that is somewhere within the program. We have two that is in their final internship right now. So, they'll be graduating in the fall and ready to start in January. We have five that will be doing internships in their final semester in the spring. And then we have four brand-new ones that just started this fall. So, it is a program that we're continuing. And what we're running into now is we're running out of paraprofessionals with the 60 hours or the AA degree. So, that's our next step, is to start working on how we can get a partnership with the college. I just reached out to Dr. Brown today. And we're gonna try to come up with something so that we can, so we can come up with a plan to get AA degrees, and then they can move on into this program. So, okay, so our first one that I want to introduce to you is Cheryl Brunkie. And she is at Aquila. You'll head towards that way. She is teaching 3rd grade. And her principal, Ms. Leary, sent me a message and it said, when the parapro program was introduced, Cheryl was the first person who came to mind. As a paraprofessional, she was, she has always worked diligently to support our students academically as well as offer social, emotional support. As a teacher, she has the enthusiasm of a brand-new teacher with the wisdom and understanding of a seasoned teacher. Cheryl is eager to learn how to be the best teacher she can be and expects her students to work hard and be the best that they can be. She believes in their ability to grow, therefore, they believe in themselves. We are so grateful that this program has offered her the opportunity to be an Aquila teacher and to share her passion for learning with our students in the classroom. Samantha Edwards. Samantha is at Browning Pierce Elementary, and she is also teaching 3rd grade. Ms. Drew says Samantha is a blessing to Browning Pierce. She worked tirelessly at completing her requirements in the program, and even when it got tough, she never gave up. It's obvious when you walk, when you talk to her that teaching is a work of the heart. She's completely invested in the success of her students every day when she walks in the door. She's a Browning Pierce bear through and through. Cindy Hunt. Cindy teaches ELA at Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences. Mr. Ellis says that Cindy Hunt has always been an excellent teacher, even before becoming a teacher. Thanks to the Paris to Pros, she now gets paid to do the job she dearly loves, and we are fortunate that she is on the Putnam Academy team. Oscar Hamus. He is at Crescent City Junior/Senior High, and I believe you are teaching Spanish? I thought so, okay. Oscar has been a part of the Putnam County School District over the last several years. He is one to always challenge himself in all aspects of his job. When the parapro teacher program became available, he was interested from the onset and has risen to the challenge of completing his courses and becoming a certified teacher. Oscar is the first Hispanic male Crescent City High School alumni to stay in Putnam and teach at the very school he graduated from. Oscar tells his students, don't compare yourself to others, just focus on being a better version of yourself than you were yesterday. And this is exactly what he has done, and we thank him for serving in the community in which he lives. Heather Pogue. Polacka Junior/Senior High School ELA teacher, as she just told us. Mr. Stout told us that Heather has been a wonderful addition to Polacka Junior/Senior High School. She has a great ability to create positive relationships and transfer these into effective classroom instruction.
Heather's proud dad is here.
And Samantha's mom, Samantha's mom.
We have one more that was unable to be with us this afternoon, but I do want to go ahead and recognize her. And that's Jennifer Tucker. She is teaching at Kelly Smith Elementary, 3rd grade. And Mr. Tucker said, Jennifer Tucker has proven to be one of our most dedicated first-year teacher hires. Her previous experience as a paraprofessional has allowed her to develop extraordinarily strong classroom management skills while also providing her with insights that other first-year teachers haven't acquired yet. So, this is our first cohort of Paris to Pros. And I'm just so excited that, like, we knew we were going to have some teachers that we didn't have to go looking for. They were right here. They are from Putnam, they've been with us, they're going to stay with us. They are in it for the long haul. And I just want to point out, I think it's, when I was looking at these and thinking about the assignments, I think it says a lot about the people that they are, that we have three 3rd grade teachers standing before you and two ELA teachers. That says a lot about first-year teachers and the confidence that their administrators has in them.
Wonderful.
So, Tanya, does it look promising to be able to continue this program year after year?
Yes, as long as we can get people with AA degrees. I mean, that's gonna be our next challenge, is just making sure that we can get them to that point.
Well, hopefully even Dr. Brown can get something figured out.
Yes, she's already responded to me, we're gonna work on a meeting.
Thank you all so much, and congratulations. We'll now move to our public comment section. Do we have any public comments? No. Seeing none, we have also no here, public hearing. So, we'll move to the consent agenda. Ms. Gillyard, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
No, ma'am.
No. Mr. Buckles?
No, ma'am, I've met with the superintendent and assistant superintendent prior to the meeting, and I feel good.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
No, Ms. Odom was kind enough to answer all the questions I had, so I'm good to go.
And Mr. McGinnis? No. And I have none, so we can entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to accept the consent agenda as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. We'll go out of regular session into emergency session. And we have three items in emergency. The first one is the PCSD Insurance Committee Board Recommendations.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this item and move forward.
I'll make a second to that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept the Insurance Committee Board Recommendations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Our next emergency item is the hourly rate approval of a physical therapist.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve hourly rate approval of a physical therapist. Therapist justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept item number two, hourly rate approval of physical therapist. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Item number three, one-on-one assistant for an after, for the after-school program.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion that we accept item number three and the emergency items, one-on-one assistance for after-school program justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Sandra Gillyard and a second by Mr. David Buckles to accept the item number three, the one-on-one assistant for after-school program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. We are out of emergency session, back into regular session. We, I see, we have no unfinished business, no new business. So, we'll remove, we'll move to the reports by board members, the board attorney, and the superintendent. Mr. McGinnis, would you like to go first?
Congratulations, Mr. Monroe. Nine years, right? Nine years, because I remember when I was souping, you think you won your very first state championship. Congratulations, job well done, especially that, I mean, repeat after repeat after repeat. Would you mind sharing what you got out of that?
Just a lot of experience and a lot of fun.
You need to cook.
Fun is good.
A lot of fun works. I wanna congratulate the first cohort there, the Paris to Pros. It's a great program, great way for our employees to further and just kinda do what they're called to do. I know some people don't get it until they're 60, 56. Somewhere near that age. It's a great program, and thank you, Ms. Whitehurst, for keeping that strong.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, Ms. Crawford.
I'm also very excited about the Paris to Pros and former students being involved in that. I'm so proud of them and looking forward to working on getting kids the 60 hours with the AA at St. John's. I'm so thrilled about the raises for our bus drivers. It's taken a long time, but we finally, to the powers that be that got that done, praise to you. They are our heroes. Fall sports, boy, they're giving us some exciting moments to watch and be a part of. And all our teams are doing really well. I do wanna remind everyone about Feed the Need fundraiser that's coming up, Disco Nights. All the money raised will go to giving food to our underserved students in Putnam County that may not have enough to eat on the weekends. It's gonna be October 23rd from 7:00 to 11:00 at the Shrine Club. And the famous band, The Boogie Freaks, are gonna be playing. But even better, Ronnie Tommas is the DJ, so that's gonna be fun. Let's see, what was, what did I have next? I was kinda sad to see on the news this morning that Florida is one of only two states that didn't respond or submit a plan to the United States Department of Education to get federal dollars in COVID relief funds. And we're missing out on about $2.3 billion by not submitting that plan that could help our students. So, hopefully, they'll get that in, and hopefully, they're not cutting off their nose to spite their face. It's money that we qualify for. Okay, the last thing that I want to talk about, and I've had long discussions with the superintendent and with our Student Services Director, dealing with fights at, in our schools, specifically Polacka High School. And from what they can find out and what I've heard a lot of is that it's coming in from outside.
Always has.
And just like there was a fight yesterday, and then after that fight was over and they went home, they got in fights in the streets, the same kids. And then adults joined in, and that just exacerbates the situation. And then they came back to school today, probably not even the same kids, and were fighting about what happened the day before. My concern is that our teachers are trying to teach in this chaos. Our administrators are getting hurt in the process of trying to break up fights. And I know that they will do everything they can to keep it from happening, but we've got to have help from everyone, parents, students, everyone. Teachers are leaving, and, you know, we can't afford to lose any teachers. Until we invoke serious consequences, nothing's going to change. Talking to them doesn't help. Putting them in Solutions Center doesn't seem to help. Nothing's going to change until there are severe penalties for this serious violent type of fighting. I don't know, three strikes, you're out, what's it gonna take? Send them to a facility, you know, like, what was it, Gateway back in, back in the day? Off-campus where they're, where they don't have any contact with the reg, you know, their regular school day. We've got to do something. And as a board, I think, you know, we, and I'm sure we are willing to do anything that we can to help. And last, I can't go without saying that I encourage everyone to please wear masks in the classroom. And that's all I have.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just respond?
Absolutely. I expected you to.
Yeah, I asked Mr. Hedstrom to be here in case you have any questions. But I asked Mr. Hedstrom actually to go out and visit Polackahay yesterday and today, and he's worked very closely with the administration. We've been in contact with the administration. And it is our intent for these students who want to disrupt the learning environment to make sure the consequences are to the fullest extent allowed by the Code of Conduct.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we wanna make sure that if they're gonna bring that stimulus from the neighborhood, that we're gonna deal with. And what happens in the neighborhood, happens in the neighborhood when they come to our schools. When they come to our schools, we're gonna deal with it.
I'm gonna mention the same thing in my report and what we talked about earlier.
But I just wanna stress to our parents and our teachers and our students, we do think they're very serious and understand your concerns. And Randy, sir, if you have any additional questions, but he-
We talked at length today and-
And he's got, he's done a lot of creative things to make sure that we are getting ahead of that. And anyway, he's here if he has some additional questions. That's all I have, I just wanna make sure that-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Crawford and I talked yesterday-
Yes. Yeah.
As well as Mr. Buckles and I talked today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crawford. Mr. Buckles?
I'd like to reiterate my conversation with the superintendent. Dealt with me receiving a few phone calls and one from my daughter who got it from her daughter. She was my granddaughter. And different ones that her friends called wanting to know what's going on. And I met with the superintendent, and I know he knows what to do. Mr. Hedstrom knows what to do. You know, this is all, we're going through a new year. We've got kids on a long schedule at Polackahay where we're having to make some changes and some unique adaptations. And I believe Rick's and his staff, Mr. Bowling and Mr. Hedstrom have, have things ready to go. I feel very comfortable after discussing that with them today. And, you know, we're not gonna have, you can't help but have sometimes an employee trying to break up a fight and they get injured. We've had broken arms and things from our employees over the years, and it's not, not uncommon. But any child that refuses to stop after being told by an adult, then, then I think you're looking at one of the most grievous offenses. You know, you repeatedly don't listen to what a grown-up says, and they have to intervene, and they get their leg broke or arm broke. It's a bad deal. And, you know, it's not that punishment and discipline are not foremost in our thoughts. It's just gonna take us a little bit of adaptation. And I think we're, it's some community reach out to find out where these problems are coming from in the neighborhoods. And you've got, it just, we gotta find a way to do it. And I think it's gonna be sooner rather than later, and I feel good about what Rick was telling me. So, I would encourage everybody to take heart. And, you know, we've got, like I said before, ad nauseam, armed anonymous individuals in all of our schools who take very seriously the safety of our children. It would be a shame if a child came with some trivial problem from the community and got in a fight and picked up a weapon, and somebody inadvertently were to do, you know, the maximum harm to a child. So, we're gonna work on it, and I'm very pleased to know where we are with that. So, you know, parents, and unfortunately, it's the parents that aren't watching this that need to hear it. Ms. Crawford's right, it's some very underserved segments of the community, and it's just not good. But I feel certain it's gonna improve. Fall sports are really, I've been involved in volleyball because I've got so many kids and nieces and great nieces and everything else playing volleyball that I've been tied up with that and haven't made the football games. But I do listen to some of the games, and pretty exciting. So, with that, I think the superintendent and his staff know that we're all right here at their disposal if they need to take any severe action. He has the authority to go to the fullest extent of the law, Rick, which I believe is a maximum of two years out of school. Okay, thank you. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles, Ms. Gillyard.
Just wanna, excuse me, wanna comment and compliment the Paris to Pros program and Ms. Whitehurst and her team. And as the young lady was speaking, some key words I wrote down, and I can recall these happening over 50-some years ago when I started out. She mentioned love, support, help, and encouragement. And that's what we hope is happening. Well, I take that back. I know that's happening at all of our schools, and we don't-
I know that's happening at all of our schools, and we don't want any of our employees to be afraid to come to us when there is a concern, because we do listen, and we try and come up with a solution that is good for all of us, and so we just encourage you, as Mr. Buckles said, parents, when something drastic happens and you come before the board, usually our hands are tied, but now is the time for you to address the issue with your child at home. We have enough going on with the concerns about the virus and, and these other things that we cannot see without having to deal with disruptive students, and so the message is clear and simple. You disrupt, you're sending us a message that you don't want to be there, and when you come before the board for expulsion, you may not leave us a choice, and we're not threatening, we're just trying to ask you to wake up while it is time for you to do something to keep your child out of trouble. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. I just have a few things. One is, I was reading an article by Mark Blumenthal in the Palatka Daily News on James Campbell III. I don't know the young man, but I think he, he is a wonderful person. The adversity that he's faced while he's been at Montana State was, was a lot, enough that a lot of kids would have turned and come home, but just being moved to a different position than you've ever played before. He was a quarterback at Palatka High, and now he's a defensive back, and he's embraced it. But a quote that was in the article was, "Tough times don't last, tough people do." A coach had told him that, and, and I love the quote, so I'm going to try to get it in my memory, because it doesn't last. It's, it's the person you are that does. We signed resolutions for retirement today before the meeting, and one of the, the people, Mary Middleton, is a friend of mine, and I'm so happy for her to reach her retirement. I'm very sad for the kids that, the lives that she's touched, and-
What did she do?
She taught ESE pre-K, but the thing is, is that she, she believes, she believes in each child, and she, each child was going to succeed in her class, and she's just a wonderful person, and I hope she enjoys retirement. I'd also, the pairs-to-pro program, soon as we heard about that, I was excited, and the first name that came to my mind at Crescent City was Oscar, and he, I'm just so happy, and the beginning of school, I got the chance to visit his classroom and his students. It was a Spanish, and he was doing an activity with them, and they were all so attentive, and I just, Oscar was his former student, and I'm just so very proud of him. And thank you, Ms. Whitehurst, for that program, and if we can get the AA program attached to it, that's fantastic. I'd like to commend the Insurance Committee because they've worked tirelessly so that we could give our employees the best possible, and we approved that today, and so that whole enrollment period will start soon. I'd also like to thank Michelle McDaniel. She made a special video for the Hall of Fame induction that we had at Crescent City, and she went out of her way. It's, it's excellent. It's just wonderful.
Come on, Melissa.
Melissa, Melissa. And I taught a child named Michelle McDaniel. She, but she went out of her way to, to do that for us, and the thing is, is when you're involved in getting an award, you don't really, you didn't, you're not, you're not paying attention to what all's being said or anything. You're, you're getting it, it's, you know, kind, so for those girls to get to watch that was really special. So with that, I'll move to our board attorney, Mr. Taylor.
We were around today, we got to work with staff, we got to address some of the definitions of the different transgressions, where they fall, and what punishments are appropriate and what are not, and I just warn students that if, if they're going to do things, realize that real thing, well quickly, you think something that's a small fight turns into something that you can get expelled for.
Correct.
And staff is aware of what they can do and how, how bad the punishments can be, and so we would really hope the students would, would not start something, because it can very quickly escalate from something that we normally think would be just a small punishment to something where they'll no longer be in school.
Right.
And so I hope that's not necessary, but we have worked with staff on that. We are staying abreast of all the different parts of the CARES Act, ARBA, and some of the other funds that are coming in from the state level. As we, you know, if we get approval from the State Department of Education, we'll be in line, and we'll be conversing with the other attorneys to kind of help navigate that and help run it with that if she has any questions. So I do hope that kind of comes online soon, and I'm cautiously optimistic, so, and that's my part.
Thank you. Dr. Sertse.
Yeah, I have several items. First of all, I just want to extend our positive prayers to Aaron Gisselman and his family.
So sad.
He's a part of the Raider Nation in South Putnam, Crescent City Junior Senior High. Tragic loss of his wife this past week, so. Also want to, on a happy note, want to say congratulations to Wendy Hancock, one of our beloved members-
We're going to miss her.
... retired this past week. I know Laura's going to miss her dearly. And I want to mention something about the behavior again, and again, I want people to realize we're not just in a reactionary mode about behavior. There's also a proactive approach to this, and Randy does an excellent job in trying to be proactive. You know, this is all about teaching kids how to behave in a school environment, in that there's boundaries of what you can do and what you can't do, and Randy's put some resources towards, you know, trying to do, Randy, the, the name of the program that we do-
It's called LIVE, is what, what they're going to do at Palatka High School, and this works for kids getting points, positive points for positive behavior, getting in class on time, for instance, get a point, you know, doing the right thing by staying out of fights, doing well in the class, they get points, and then you get to a certain points, and you get rewarded, something rewarded. So Student Services has also, because we do, you know, we are concerned about the kids that make wrong decisions, and they're going to have consequences, but we also need to pay attention to the kids that are doing the right thing every day.
Yeah.
Make sure that we let them know that we appreciate them going to class, doing what they're supposed to do, being respectful. So we've, we've, Mr. Stout, I've worked with him, and we put that in place as a positive behavior support systems that we have that we're going to put in place, which would help some also.
Randy, Randy's boots on the ground, and he's out there working close with them, so I appreciate what he does, and I think we're going to see good things happen.
Rick, I think what they don't understand is any behavior that disrupts the orderly process of a school can be considered-
Right.
-grounds for removal immediately.
And the loss of learning time.
They just don't know, and Randy's right. I mean, if you can, if the kids can see how this can happen, that's about the only way they're going to learn it, because they're going to be playing with phones and, you know, they're not paying attention if they're getting in fights every day.
So we're on that. I just want to make sure you know that we definitely are taking an active approach. I do want to mention on a positive note, too, that last week, actually starting this past Monday, we relaxed some of our protocols on our COVID response based on our data. Our positivity rate declined, down to 8.5 positivity rate, and that's countywide. So again, because of that, we're able to back off on, like, requiring masks on buses. We made that voluntary. Some of the school activities, like pepper houses, dances, that type thing, we're able to offer that, whereas the week before that, we couldn't because the data was different. But again, you know, as the data changes, which it very well might because of the flu season and the holidays, we may have to tighten up again, but we're trying to look at the data very closely to make sure that, you know, we're making the right decision. I do want to mention today that many of our employees who, non-classroom teachers, received a nice little retention payment in their banks today. Some of you might be aware of that. And I give our thanks to all the employees who worked last year and continue to work this year, retention, for, you know, weathering the storm and helping us get through a very difficult period. So the administration was very happy to be able to do that, and, you know, I think it's just a nice tangible way to say thank you. Again, I want to thank the Insurance Committee, and again, talking about money, we were able to put some seed money towards our HSA accounts, and as you know, you approve the HSA plans, and again, this gives our employees a little bit of head start on their HSA account, and I think that'd be, you know, a good use. Thanks to the Insurance Committee for that. Finally, our pairs to pros, I'm just so proud of these, these employees, and these are all employees who have had kind of life first, then they've gone back to school, and I think they have a much, you know, deeper appreciation of, you know, what education means, and I think they'll convey that to our students. But I really want to thank Tanya Whitehurst and Kristen Carroll for being the driving force behind that, along with our Novice Teacher Mentor Program, and I know I've mentioned to you before, but they're going to be representing Putnam County in Washington, DC next week in presenting on this to a national audience. Putnam County is going to be on the national scene about this program that you just saw. So we have a lot of districts that are asking about it, and I can't thank our HR department enough for their creativity, so that's all I have, Madam Chair.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? This meeting's adjourned.